Good morning, everyone, and welcome to COS Live. I'm Rita Peters, and I will be your host this morning. In just a few moments, we are expecting a public hearing before the South Dakota House Committee on our Convention of States Action Article V Application. You will hear it referred to in this committee as SJR 502. Our sponsor is Senator Jim Melhoff, so he will be introducing our resolution, explaining it, outlining it for the committee. And then, we also have Senator Rick Santorum is back once again in Pierre, South Dakota, to give a little bit of expert testimony for this committee. We also have Mark Meckler, Convention of States Action co-founder and president, on the ground. Not sure if we will see him testify, since we have Rick there to do that, but Mark is on the ground to meet with the grassroots, inspire them, and also talk to some legislators that we need to firm up to get the votes we need to pass. Now, we are already passed on the Senate side of South Dakota. We passed a couple of weeks ago by a vote of 23 to 9, so a resounding victory in the South Dakota Senate. And now, we just need to get through the House for final passage. South Dakota could become state number 20 to pass our Article V application. And of course, that is state number 20 on the road to 34, which is the number we need to get to convention. Now, let's review just a little bit of background information, so you are fully informed about what you're about to watch. Nineteen states have already passed our Article V resolution for a convention for proposing amendments to the U.S. Constitution on three topics: imposing fiscal restraints on the federal government, limiting federal power and jurisdiction, and setting term limits for federal officials and members of Congress. We are using the Constitution to save the Constitution and restore our republic and our federal system, to propose amendments that will force the feds to abide by sane fiscal policy, restore constitutional limits, and send the swamp monsters packing for good. So, how did we get here, you might ask? It all starts with "we," the people. The Convention of States South Dakota Volunteer Team has been busy building support across the state and in the legislature. Over 16,000 South Dakotans have signed the Convention of States petition, asking their state legislators to vote yes on Convention of States. A scientific polling survey shows that a whopping 72% of South Dakotans support the COS resolution to rein in federal tyranny. And again, last month, the South Dakota Senate State Affairs Committee, just a few weeks ago really, but it was last month, they heard public testimony on this same resolution. It was our first hearing of the year, and Senator Rick Santorum was there on hand to give expert testimony. In an overwhelming victory, that Senate committee voted 8 to 1 with a "do pass" recommendation. That, of course, sent our resolution to the floor, where it was considered by the full South Dakota Senate, and that body voted 23 to 9 in favor of our resolution. Again, an overwhelming majority. Today, we're in the South Dakota State Affairs Committee, and Senior Advisor Rick Santorum is again on the ground and expected to testify today. Now, I'm advised by our folks on the ground that the committee chair is wanting to give about 15 minutes for testimony. And the way it generally works in South Dakota committees is that however long the proponent side takes giving public testimony, that's the amount of time that's generally allotted for the opponents as well, so they try to keep it even. Now, I don't think that includes the introduction of the bill.
Legislative coverage on SD will be supported by the South Dakota Bar Foundation.
Sponsor, Senator Jim Melhoff, so we'll see him. I expect him to give a passionate and expert introduction of our resolution. Then generally, they will go straight to our expert who is on hand to give testimony. Again, that'll be Senator Rick Santorum. Then they'll take proponent testimony, then they go to opponent testimony. And then, on the Senate side, they did allow us a little bit of time for rebuttal. If I recall correctly, that time was basically given to Senator Santorum, so I'm hoping to see a repeat of that today. It's always really helpful when we get a chance to set the record straight, because again, we've watched tons of these hearings, and there's really no new opposition argument. It all comes down to fear and ignorance of history and legal precedent. So, it's always helpful if we get a chance to give rebuttal, set the record straight, and correct whatever misinformation is given. Now, I do expect our South Dakota grassroots team to be on the ground there. I understand Pierre is a very difficult state capital for people to get to in South Dakota, so it is very impactful whenever we have our supporters make the trip to be there. I do think you'll see them there today. Can't wait to hear their testimony. Our state director Shirley Meyer does a wonderful job. She knows that legislature inside and out, and she is known to them. She has a positive, respectful, and consistent presence there in that legislature. The legislators know her, they're friendly with her, and Shirley has always just done a great job, so I want to give an early shout-out to her. I'm hoping that Regional Director Deanna Beckett might be able to join us after the hearing to give us her feedback and comments on whatever it is that transpires. And by the way, we do expect the South Dakota House Committee to vote at the conclusion of testimony and the hearing on our resolution today. So, please be praying for that. The votes are a little bit tighter in this committee on the House side, so we need all of our votes to be there. We need people to be paying attention, and just pray for open hearts and really open minds, that they would really listen to the evidence and make their decisions based on facts and not fear. That's really the challenge here. So, we expect to start any minute. This committee does have an agenda with a lot of other items on it today, but we are first up on this agenda, so that's always helpful, helps us have a little bit more certainty about the timing. And they should be starting any minute. Before they do, I want to say, this is not the only public hearing scheduled for a Convention of States action today. At 10:30 a.m. Central Time, which is 11:30 a.m. Eastern Time, COS Live will be back, bringing you live coverage from Kansas of a public committee hearing there as well. And for that hearing, we have Michael Ferris lined up to give virtual testimony, so that should be a great hearing. And can't wait to see good things happening in Kansas this year. Once it's time for that hearing, we'll give you a little bit more of an update and some background about the very interesting situation in Kansas and what we expect and hope to see there this year. By way of national update, I'll just tell you, we have two states that are in a race for number 20, but neither one is an easy race. They both still have a lot that needs to get done, some votes that need to be nailed down, so they're in a race for number 20, but it's a tough race. We have both the South Dakota Senate and the Wyoming Senate have both already passed our resolutions, so right now they're tied. South Dakota is going to get a leg up today, assuming we pass this committee. And it looks like we have some audio now from the committee room, so I'm gonna let Producer G take you to that committee hearing right now.
If you're joining us online, and you need to contact us, it's housestateaffairs@sdlegislature.gov. And just a reminder, we'd ask all testimony and questions to be addressed through the chair. At this time, I would ask the Secretary to please call the roll.
Representatives FaMuler.
Here.
Emery.
Here.
Gosh.
Here.
Hanson.
Here.
Healy.
Here.
Heineman.
Here.
Jamison.
Here.
Lemms.
Here.
Reich.
Here.
Schaefer.
Here.
Soy.
Here.
Overwig.
Here.
Ottenbach. We have a call, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. At this time, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the last It has been moved by, I didn't hear who it was, Healy, seconded by Hanson, to approve the minutes of the last meeting. Those in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The minutes are approved. Okay, so, no pages today to introduce. We are going to now talk about the agenda. There was a little, a couple of things got switched up, but we're going to take it in order of what is published online, so we're going to try to do four bills today. Start out with SJR 502, then we'll get to SB's 12, SB 17, and then finally SB 20. On this first one, because we're trying to do four, we're going to do 15 minutes of proponent and 15 minutes of opponent testimony. I see we've got a lot of people signed in that want to testify on it, so, you know, a couple of the main people who are obviously going to pitch this thing, and then let's try to keep it short. So, let's start off with SJR 502. "Applying to the United States Congress for a Convention of the States to Propose Amendments to the United States Constitution Regarding the Imposition of Fiscal Restraints on the Federal Government, Further Limiting the Power and Jurisdiction of the Federal Government and Limiting the Terms of Office for Members of Congress and Other Federal Officials." We will take proponent testimony at this time. Welcome, Representative Heineman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. My name is Leslie Heineman. I'm a representative from District 25, Moody County, in the northern part of Minnehaha. I bring to you today SJR 502, an application to the U.S. Congress for Convention of States. Most of you, if not all of you, have heard about this process before. While I don't pretend to be an expert in the area, I, like you, am concerned about our country. The last four years have been more than a wake-up call to demonstrate just how much power the President and federal government have taken from South Dakota and its citizens. I had a constituent email me the other day, and she got it so succinctly right, and I want to quote, her name is Sherry from Garrettson. "While there are critical issues you should address specifically for South Dakota, it's equally pressing to tackle the challenges confronting our nation. Those in Washington, D.C. are unlikely to address these effectively due to the reluctance to diminish their own authority. An Article V Convention to Propose Amendments can specifically focus on these areas where federal power has grown excessively and redirect control back to South Dakota." End quote. This is a concerned citizen. I don't think anyone in this room thinks the federal government is restricted. Please listen with an open mind to those that follow me here today in a proponent testimony. I am grateful for their efforts and the willingness to address this committee on a topic I feel is very important to our state and our country. I'm asking you to vote yes on term limits, limited government, and fiscal restraint. I'll stand by for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Heineman. Are there any more proponent testifiers?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the committee. Thank you so much. It's an honor to be here to testify. My name is Rick Santorum. I'm a former senator from Pennsylvania, served 16 years in the House and Senate, ran for president a couple of times, unfortunately never got to campaign here in South Dakota. You guys have too late of a primary for me, I didn't quite make it that far, but I did win 11 states in 2012 and have been, still remain outside of Washington and work for news agencies and comment a lot on Washington, and very, very involved. And I'm here asking for your help. The federal government is in a very bad state right now, we all know that. When I left the United States Senate, the national debt was $7 trillion, it is now $37 trillion. And I'm not that old. Things are, we are accumulating debt at over $1 trillion every four months. Does anyone on this committee think that this country is not headed for fiscal collapse? Is there any doubt in your mind that we are not headed to fiscal collapse? Or that our country is increasingly becoming a tyranny, with both parties now looking to the President to basically wave his pen and do anything he wants to do until the court or somebody else stops him? And it's not just Democrats, it's Democrats and Republicans. Is that the way this country is supposed to operate? Do we now have more and more authoritarianism in Washington, D.C. that they can do anything they want? The answer is no. But how did we get here? And I think people say, "Well, you know, you have this Constitution that's beautiful, don't touch it." Ladies and gentlemen, it's been touched. It's been touched two ways, by constitutional amendment and also by courts. If you order a copy of the Constitution of the United States from the General Printing Office, you are not going to get a pocket Constitution. You're going to get a document that's 2,600 pages long, because it is the Constitution we live by. People say, "We don't live by the Constitution." And that's not true. We do, as amended and as interpreted by the courts. That's the Constitution we live by. So, people say, "Don't change this perfect document." Ladies and gentlemen, it's been changed. It's 2,600 pages. And they have more and more power than they ever thought in 1787 they ever had. Why? Because the Constitution is written, they had checks in it. They had, yes, the checks between the different branches of government in Washington, but the biggest check they put in was you. The state legislatures were the check. Do you realize that one thing that all the founders had in common? They were state legislators. They were not federal office holders. And they wanted the states to be at the top of the food chain, so they put two provisions in there to make sure you could, you would stay there, and that the federal government would be limited. And one, you changed, the most important one. Up until 1912, do you know how United States senators were elected? Most people don't. They were appointed by you, the state legislature. But that changed with the 17th Amendment. And why am I here in South Dakota? Because you were one of the states that ratified it. You put us in this position, it's now your responsibility as the South Dakota State Legislature to get us out of it. Up until 1912, and five years later, it was only 1917 they changed the law. Why did it wait till 1917 to change the way the Senate operated to allow more bills to pass? Because it took two elections, a third of the Senate being up, and then two elections for them to get a majority of popular elected senators, and as soon as they did, they changed the rules and allowed more bills to pass so they could grow the federal government. And you folks did it, right here in South Dakota. And so, I'm back to you to say, we need to do, to mobilize the other provision they put in there to make sure the states could check the federal government. And what is that? Article V of the Constitution provides for you a power that heretofore you have not exercised, and for a long time you didn't need to, because you had other ways of checking power. But now, you do have to use this. And people say, "Well, it could be dangerous. I'm not sure about this." The reality is, the founders wrote it in there. You think you love the Constitution, but all of a sudden, oh, there's one provision I think the founders got wrong. The reality is, the founders put checks in this process. Thirty-eight states have to ratify any amendment that comes out of this process. All this, all this resolution does is allow for a convention to be held to propose amendments. Nothing is ratified until it's sent to the states, and 38 states have to ratify. We've only had 17 amendments since the founding, and there's a reason for that, because 38 states is 75% of the country. 75% of the country means that any issue that's going to get approved has to have at least 80, 85% consent among the electorate. Aren't very many issues like that. So, the idea that something bad could come out of this convention, it could run away, even if that's true, and I can be happy to answer questions later as to why that won't happen and can't happen, there is a check, and that's you, the state legislatures. Only one House in 13 different states simply has to not vote on ratification during the seven-year timeline, that's usually the timeline they give for ratification, and we don't have an amendment passed. There are checks in place. What there isn't a check in place is that Washington, D.C. needs a boss. They need someone to be accountable to, and historically, that has been you. You have given up the power, but oddly, you have the power. You're Spider-Man. You have great power, and with it comes great responsibility. You need to use that power to save our country. This country is on fire. The House is burning down, and you are standing across the street, looking at your house burning down, and you're afraid to cross the street because some car might come along and hit you. Let me assure you, the street in front of you is not a busy street. There are not a lot of risk, and it's time to cross the street and put the fire out. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator. Great to have you. Are there any other proponent testifiers? We've got about six minutes left for proponent testimony.
Well, Chair, and representatives, welcome. My name is Manny Steele, I'm from District 12, and I'd like to say a little bit about myself. I've been in the, representative for 10 years in the House here. My BA is in Business Administration, my military is U.S. Navy, and the last 10 years I've been a member of the Civil Air Patrol, which is affiliated with the Air Force. And I've been around for quite a while, and our country is falling apart. That's why I'm asking for your vote on a yes for SJR 502. Article V was given to us by our founding fathers to use as a protection against a runaway federal government. We can obviously see that, how the federal government controls many areas that should be state-controlled, that is you, our state representatives. You should be making those decisions. Article V was written specifically for this purpose. Those who wrote our Constitution knew this would happen, because it has happened every single time in every other democracy that there's ever been. What has happened? A runaway federal government. But what about the runaway convention? Which, I believe, really didn't happen. But we did end up at the present Constitution, and in that case, whatever happened, I'm glad it did, because I like the Constitution just the way it is. Our federal government has a right to amend our Constitution, and totally, it's done it 27 times. That is the same right to amend the Constitution that's been given to us through you folks, our representatives, if we choose to use it. All I ask is that you give the people of the state of South Dakota the right to use the amendment to fix what I feel is wrong. I ask again for your vote, a yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other proponents?
Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, I am Jeffrey Church. I'm a retired Army Colonel. I live in Vermillion, South Dakota, District 17. I served 30 years active duty in the U.S. Army. While in the Army, I served five combat tours, one in Kosovo, two in Afghanistan, two in Iraq. So, I've literally defended the Constitution of the United States with my life on the line. The ideas in this Article V, call for a Convention of States, are not foreign to us in South Dakota. We find these ideas in our South Dakota State Constitution, we find them in our South Dakota GOP platform. We have term limits, we have fiscal responsibility, we have the ability for people to vote on referred laws. You, our state legislators, control who our convention commissioners will be. You draft the terms and limits of their commissions. You determine what, if any, controls are in place to punish commissioners who violate their commissions. You determine the method for notifying of proposals from the convention. I love our Constitution. I am NRA A-plus rated. I am a USCCA member. I am a South Dakota Enhanced Concealed Carry Permit holder. I love free speech. I have two YouTube channels and several other social media accounts. I have a political science degree, public administration, and a law degree. I would not support anything that I thought might jeopardize our Bill of Rights or our Constitution. I ask you to honor the wisdom of our founding fathers, who unanimously agreed on the need for an Article V Convention of States for the purpose of proposing amendments. Please support Article V. Please support our Constitution. Please support Senate Joint Resolution 502. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Church. Got a couple of minutes left. Any other proponent testifiers? And we'll be into me-too time, pretty much.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. Jim Melhoff, District 24 Senator, and also the prime sponsor of this bill in the Senate. And I just want to come up and talk about two things that I've recently read by legal scholars. Number one was a story, article written by Neil Gorsuch, where he talks about how the federal bureaucracy is now currently exercising not only executive authority, but legislative authority and judicial authority, all within the confines of the federal bureaucracy. And that's something that we definitely need to get a handle on. And the second is, I've read some articles by Justice Scalia, where he talks about his support for an Article V, and I think he wrapped it up pretty, pretty well in the fact that the reason that the framers put it in there is because they realized that at some point, Congress, which has the ability to propose amendments, would fall out of step with the state governments. And they have, they've fallen in step with the K-State lobbyists and special interests in Washington that control a lot of what they do, and not necessarily the states. So, I would appreciate it if you would vote for this, and I would also clarify that you're not the ones who got rid of the 17th Amendment. Your predecessors did it, and we have a chance to fix it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator, for clarifying that, for your testimony. Any other, we're kind of getting up to me-tos for just a minute, so.
I have, for your page.
Pages are right here, if you have a handout.
Would you hand them out? Thank you. Those are testimonies from people who wanted to be here, but could not, but they want their voice heard. And I will make mine real short, because I know we're real short. Basically, it's a me-too, and all I wanted to do was go through the process of...
Ma'am, could you please state your name?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Shirley Meyer. I'm the state director for Convention of States, and I'm also a volunteer, and I'm in District 14. And am I out of time?
Yeah, we're pretty much into just me-tos at this point, so thank you, Ms. Meyer.
Okay, I will be, and basically, what I wanted to do was say, if it's okay with the chairman, because I know there's a lot of people want to testify, if I could have them stand and as a way of testifying, would that be okay?
Well, if they would just want to come up one at a time and just give a me-too, and we can run through that, that would be great.
Okay, fantastic.
Thank you.
Come up, say your name, district and city. Thank you.
Scott Lewis, of Rapid City, District 35, and I support Convention of States.
Thank you.
Mike Wyler, Rapid City, support with 502. Please let him write a proposal. If you want to vote no, vote no then. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dave DeJbey, District 24, me-too.
Thank you.
Chris Beckett, formerly of District 29 and 33, we've since then, but we're here supporting SDR 502.
Thank you very much, sir.
Tim Goodwin, District 30, representative, me-too.
Thank you.
Trey Switzenberg, District 9, Sioux Falls. I just want to say this, the first time I've ever been to Pierre to testify about anything. I've been following this for 10 years, and I think it's time that South Dakota does something and gets things under control, because I've been following this for the rest of my whole life, I just see everything falling apart, so hopefully you guys do something about it.
Thank you, sir. Was there anyone online who wants to offer a quick me-too, then we're going to get to opponents? I don't know. I don't know. Michael Fame.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep, sir. We are just about out of time, just kind of wanting a brief introduction and a Me Too if you're a proponent of this.
My name is Michael Fame. I'm definitely a proponent for this, so we need to get this going, so I support it.
Okay. Thank you, sir. All right. Seeing no other proponent testimony, there are opponents to this measure in the room today that want to testify.
My name is Michael Boyle. I'm a pastor over in Parks in South Dakota, and I rise in opposition to this resolution. I totally agree that DC needs a boss. It needs a boss desperately. But you can't control DC if you're on their payroll. And if this body is not willing to say no to federal money, what's the idea that we're going to be able to control the federal government? We're dependent on their spending. I remember going to, about 10 years ago, to a presentation about Compact for America. And they told me that if we didn't pass an Article 5 resolution in the next six months, there's going to be rioting in the streets and all kinds of stuff, because our economy was going to fail. And I asked them afterwards, I said, what do you think will happen if we pass this thing in the next five months and we get the spending back to where it needs to be? And those people who are dependent on Medicare and Medicaid and Social Security are no longer receiving the funds, what do you think they're going to do? And he said, well, it's going to, we're going to have to slowly transition this over a long period of time. And the reality is, we do have a fiscal problem in our country. What one of the proponents didn't tell you is, at the same time they passed the 17th Amendment, they also passed the 16th Amendment, which was direct taxation, and also the Federal Reserve Act, which allowed the federal government to just start printing money. In the '70s, we took us off the gold standard, and basically, our money is debt. It isn't real money. It's just something that we walk around and pretend is money. It's Federal Reserve notes. And the proponents are asking you to risk our Constitution in order to save our dollar. Our dollar's already destroyed. I would suggest that you save the Constitution and let the dollar reach its, the value that is going on its trajectory. Our country has outlived collapses of our currency several times in the past, but our Constitution has stood firm, because it stands for the right of the people. And so I would just encourage you to not pass this resolution. The other thing I would say is, in comparison to the resolution that you passed last week, this resolution is literally just really an open convention, right? The last one was a limited convention for term limits. You know, it'll be interesting to see if it can stay limited. But this is basically an open convention. Anytime you say, we're going to set new limits on the federal government, it doesn't have to be less, right? When you change the speed limit, you can actually increase the speed limit. And so, you know, when you change the 17th Amendment, you can also change the Second Amendment. And so I gave you a handout here that says, save the Second Amendment and stop an Article 5 Constitutional Convention. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boyle. Are there any other opponents?
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. Linda Shower, Concerned Women for America, LAC. I ask you, what part of the Constitution is responsible for the problems that our nation faces? Or are these problems simply because we don't obey the Constitution? And lawmakers don't obey it, and we don't understand it either. We believe Article 5 is the wrong tool for reining in an out-of-control government. The solution is right here in the United States Constitution. The problem is not the Constitution. It is not broken. Article 1, Section 8, lists the powers of the federal government, including on what they can spend money. And we know that they have far exceeded that. In fact, 80% of our federal budget is unconstitutional. Congress keeps raising the debt ceiling, causing us to go further and further into debt. That's not the fault of the Constitution. The next point is to limit the power and jurisdiction of the federal government. The states failed to assert their states' rights found in the 10th Amendment. Article 6 states that the Constitution and the laws of the United States, which shall be made pursuant thereof, shall be the supreme law of the land. So if laws are not made by, laws made by Congress are not made pursuant of the Constitution, they are null and void. We had that bill like that a year or two ago, when the federal government was wanting to ban gas stoves. We brought a bill, someone here brought a bill, that would, that would keep bans of gas stoves in operation in South Dakota. We would not ban them. That is nullification, because the Constitution doesn't say anything about how we should cook our food. And so, I have to skip around here. I have some handouts here. The convention, thank you, the convention would likely be used to push for extreme measures on both the left and the right, as James Madison said in this quote here that I hand out to you. "Our Constitution was brilliantly written, and it has stood the test of time, and it also reigns in the federal government." So please oppose this measure. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shower. Any other opponents in the room?
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of this committee. I am Heidi Engelhardt from Aberdeen, South Dakota, and I am here representing myself. I urge you to oppose Joint, Senate Joint Resolution 502. When convening a Convention of States, let's first think about the delegates for convention. The Constitution does not provide a specific method for selecting the delegates. Given the current political climate, which special interests or lobbying groups might seek representation? We lack the statesmen of the past. Instead, we have politicians who contribute to this climate, meaning the delegate process could easily be manipulated to ensure that these groups are represented well. Is the Constitution the issue, or are the politicians failing to uphold it? Congress has an approval rating of just 19% among the American people. This is the body who would be choosing how this convention would be run. This low rating is largely due to special interest groups and lobbying groups, yet this body would be the one to call this convention. Article 5 allows Congress to send proposed amendments to ratification to either state legislatures or special state conventions. Therefore, Congress can bypass state legislatures completely during the ratification process. And this body, you will no longer be held as a safeguard to any harm that an amendment could do to our Constitution. Ratification process, according to Article 5, three-fourths of the states or conventions must ratify or propose amendments. However, a new ratification process could be established, or similar to what happened during the Constitutional Convention of 1787. That convention changed the ratification requirements from unanimous approval of all 13 legislative states and Congress to approval by a special convention of the people of nine of the 13 states. A modern Constitutional Convention could lower the ratification requirement to a majority of the states, or even a simple majority of the people. How many of us have sat in a convention to hear the phrase, suspend the rules, only to see the convention deviate from its intended purpose? With that, I ask you to oppose Joint, Senate Joint Resolution 502. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Engelhardt. Are there any other opponents in the room? Okay, seeing none, we have, I believe, one online. Leah Southwell. Can you hear us, Ms. Southwell? And are you ready to discuss this?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can hear you. Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I just like, would like to point out that a Constitution that's being violated can in no way be fixed by amending it. The problem is the violations and the abuses of the Constitution. Although we definitely agree on what the problem is, I don't see that a convention in any way can fix this and only opens it to greater dangers of even further amendments, such as the 16th and the 17th being ratified. Something that I'd really like to bring up is, in this resolution itself, if you please look at Section 9. Section 9 is a list of requests to Congress. Although it's not stated as a request, it's stated more as, Congress, we are applying to you for this convention, but here are our mandates. I don't believe that you can mandate Congress as to how this convention will be done. I don't think the states, nowhere can anybody provide any documentation that says that the states will dictate to Congress how this convention will happen. It cannot dictate to them that it will be one state, one vote. It cannot dictate to them that the states will establish the rules. It cannot tell Congress how its delegates will be chosen. That is actually the role, legitimate role of the federal government in an Article 5 convention. My primary point to prove this is under Section 9.6. It states, in this resolution, Congress submits any amendments to the Constitution proposed by the convention to the legislatures of the several states for ratification. If anybody has actually read Article 5, it's only about a sentence and a half. And it does very clearly state that Congress gets to choose the method of ratification. Congress will choose whether it sends the proposed amendments to the legislatures or to state conventions. So in true understanding of Article 5, please note that you are applying to Congress, and Congress takes it over once you put in your application. Reminding you again that the Constitution is being violated, how can any amendment force them to suddenly abide by a Constitution? The Article 5 was put into the Constitution for the sake of correcting errors in the Constitution. If it's being violated, how can a convention force it to then suddenly abide by the Constitution? The Constitution is not the problem. The Constitution is the solution. I urge you, please, to vote no on this resolution. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Ms. Southwell. Any other opponent testifiers? We've got about two and a half minutes left, I think. So if there are no other opponents, we'll give the proponents a couple of minutes for
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Rick Santorum, again. Just, I want to point out one area where I agree with the opponents, which is that the Congress does, in fact, set the parameters for ratification and can decide whether to send it to the states for ratification, state legislatures or a convention. But who decides what the convention looks like? You do. So the state legislature still controls the process, because you can design what the convention looks like. Every state will, will design its own convention format, and you could actually say that you want the convention to be the state legislature, if you don't like the fact that Congress has done that. And by the way, it's, Congress has only done that once, and that was for the repeal of prohibition, where they wanted to do it quicker, and so it was, they thought that would be a quicker method, and it was something that was universally done. And there was an impending thirst for America that they needed to quench by getting that done in a quick fashion. But other than that, they have always had the state legislatures do ratification. The, the idea that the government violates the Constitution, that was something that was said, as I mentioned before, the government is living with the Constitution, it is not the original Constitution. That's the whole point. That they, that the courts and the, and the amendment process has changed the Constitution from its founding, in good ways and not so good ways. You know, we have a lot of women up here. Do we follow that amendment that allows women the right to vote? Yes, we do. That was an amendment to the Constitution. It was not, so the idea that, that amendments are not followed, in fact, they are followed. Name me one amendment to the Constitution that is not followed. Do we limit presence to two terms? I mean, go on down the list. Why? Because they're overwhelmingly popular. To get passed and to get a ratification by 38 states in the world today, they have to be overwhelmingly popular, and they are then followed. The other question was that this is a threat to the Second Amendment. Let me tell you what the threat to the Second Amendment is. The threat to the Second Amendment is that if the other party that's not in power right now takes power, the President, the Senate, and the House, they vote to remove the filibuster. They remove the filibuster. That means that they can go ahead and pack the court, which they will do, because they have said they will do that. They will pack the court, and then they will repeal the Second Amendment. You want to lose the Second Amendment, then how about, how about looking at the real threat of what would happen if the Democrats control all branches of government? How do you stop that? From a Convention of States, you propose an amendment to limit the Supreme Court to nine members. No more court packing. No more ability to wrest the Second Amendment away from us through the courts. That's how it's going to happen. You're not going to get 38 states to agree to change the Second Amendment. Give me a break. That's the real threat to the Second Amendment. If you really care about the Second Amendment, that's where you have to, you have, you have to do. Nullification was also mentioned. That was tried. And we fought a civil war over it, and we haven't done it since. And so the idea that the answer is nullification is asking for troubles I don't think anybody who wants, who's here. As far as delegate selection, you can pass a bill. There's a model legislation available from, from Alec and other places to determine who represents you at these conventions. That is up to the states. The idea that the Congress can resupl, remember, look at the constitutional, when it was added, it was added as a way to bypass Congress. It was a way to make sure that, that the states still had the authority to be able to control things without bowing to Congress. That's why this provision was put in. It was the last provision put in at the Constitutional Convention to allow the states to call a Convention of States. It was put in there by George Mason, who complained that we can't just let Congress be the only ones who can propose amendments. And it was the only amendment proposed at the Constitutional Convention that passed unanimously, without debate. This was something that all the states agreed on, which is, you folks need to retain this power, and you need to use it if the government is in peril. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator. Okay, with that, we'll close the take, the taking of public testimony, and we will open it up for committee questions. Are there any questions from the committee for anybody here today? Wow, quiet committee. Okay. No questions from the committee. Going once? Going twice? No questions, so then we will move on and open it up for committee discussion and/or Have the pages hand out some coffee, maybe. Committee discussion and/or action on SJR 502. Yeah, go ahead. Representative Jamison.
I'll make a motion to do pass.
Jamison made a motion to do pass, seconded by Representative Heinemann. Are there any discussions on that motion?
It's more of a prelude to the upcoming substitute motion. But I wanted to get it started and break the ice.
Thank you so much. Representative Schafbauer.
I make a substitute motion, 41st day.
Representative Schafbauer has a substitute motion, seconded by Representative Gosh, to move to the 41st day. Are there any, is there any discussion on the substitute motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. Yes, like I said the other day, I am afraid that the human element of conventions will play a major part in this, and it will risk our Constitution. You know, we as legislators, either at the state level or federal level, really need to get our act together and know what and who we represent and who, and what we follow in as the Constitution. And I just think by opening it up, it is, it's a Pandora's Box. And I would rather not do that, because many countries have done it, and they have either fallen or have gone into disarray. And yes, I know our country is in disarray, but at least we have a Constitution that holds us together, and I would like to keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Schafbauer. Any further discussion on the substitute motion? Representative Soi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I think we already kind of had a pretty good discussion on the last resolution that came up, so that's why there weren't a lot of questions this time. But I'm going to be resisting this motion. I think, as was clearly stated, that our Constitution has been changed in the past, that there is, there's a way to do it for a reason. And, sorry, I'm kind of repeating comments from the last meeting, but the reason that our Constitution still stands, and it hasn't become like these third-world countries, is because it is a difficult process, that you can't just change it every day. But the process is there for a reason, and I think that, you know, the current administration is giving us some hope in DC, but what's going to happen in four years? What's going to happen after that? And I'm, I'm concerned about the country that my children are going to inherit, and so I think it's time for us to take action.
Thank you, Representative Soi. Representative Heinemann.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I would urge the committee to resist this motion for a number of reasons, but... I would urge the committee to resist this motion for a number of reasons, but I don't think anyone in here thinks that our country is on the right track, even with the election that just occurred. They think that there should be some limits. Most people agree to that. The polling has been done, they, the public supports it. I have constituents, I just quoted one, that studied this issue thoroughly, and they really think we have to do something, and to do nothing is not an option. So when I hear opponents say, "Well, just let the Constitution take over. Let's do what the Constitution says," what world do they live in? That's not happening. We have a Constitution, a great Constitution, but no one's enforcing it. And this is one tool that would do that. The idea that they would change the rules at the convention and go to other issues, that's, if you read up on it, that's not correct. If there's rules that are changed that are not in keeping with the application of the convention, in this case, our three individual issues, then it has to go back to the states for ratification of the call to the convention, and that requires 34 states. It has to go back to the states if there's a change. Plus, you have the 38-state ratification process. That's a high bar. I mean, we're trying to change our election laws to 60%, from 50% to 60%. That's a 75% ratification process, very high bar. So anything that happens at the convention is going to go under huge scrutiny in our, all of our states. So for those reasons, I guess, Mr. Chair, I urge that you oppose this motion.
Thank you, Representative Heineman. Any other remarks on the 41st-day motion? Representative Jameson.
See, how about this? We broke the ice. Oh, chatting. So in lieu of, in case I can't get to say this, I believe that we've done a great thing in nationally, national elections, we've started the ball rolling, we've made a change there, it's happening. We're going to feel some of the ramifications in our state, who is reliant upon the federal government, and some might say, you know, be careful what you wish for, because we're going to receive some of those effects. But I think that we're lucky, we started it on the federal level, now it's our time to do our piece of the pie. And so I'm going to resist this motion as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Jameson. Any other remarks? Representative Gosh.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess I probably should have asked a question during questions, but that's okay. I think I know the answer anyway. Some of the language in here, "further limiting the power and jurisdiction of the federal government," that's about as vague as it can get. I mean, I can do a lot of things to fit in there. For seven years, I've been told, "We're going to, this is going to be limited," and we heard some of the talking points here just recently, "this is limited. If they don't do it the way we wanted it to, we can come back. We don't have to do it." This one's not limited. This thing's wide open. This is an absolute definition of a runaway convention sitting in front of me right now. We're just going to destroy the Constitution and rewrite it. Seven years, I've been told, "This is specific. We're going to do it specific. We've got to do it specific." We even passed one this year, and now we're doing it again. We've got one for a budget already, that's, that's out there. We've got one for term limits now in the state of South Dakota, that's out there. We've already passed those. The only one we're missing here is just to further limit the power and jurisdiction of the federal government, which is a runaway convention. That's what that is. I don't, I don't know any other way to particularly discuss that. And when we talk about constituents, I hear different stories from them all the time. I've got some constituents that tell me about the limitations, but the majority of them are saying, "No, we need to open up the whole Constitution, rewrite it. We've got to blow it up, and let's burn it down. Let's rego. Let's totally start it over." And that's what's being pushed out there into our constituents, and these constituents make this their "die-on-this-hill" issue and refuse to vote for me, even though 99.9% of the time I agree with them. And that disgusts me, because we have organizations out there that are willing to trash good legislators and politicians that actually want to do something and come down here to fight, simply because they don't want to burn down the Constitution. So, that being said, I don't feel like this comes with good faith. I don't feel like this last seven years of my experience in the legislature, this comes with good faith. I can't support an organization that would do that to people. I can't support this bill. I will support the 41st motion.
Thank you, Representative Gosh. Any further discussion? Representative Heineman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If there's a runaway convention, it's still going to go back to the states for a requirement of a three-quarters, 75%. So you think 75% of the states are going to agree to a runaway convention? That's very clear to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Heineman. Sure, why not? Anything, Representative Gosh? No, anybody else? Okay, there's no further discussion on the 41st-day motion brought by Representative Schafbauer, seconded by Gosh. I will have the secretary please call the roll.
Representative Spahn Mueller.
No.
Emery.
Yes.
Gosh.
Aye.
Hanson.
No.
Healy.
Aye.
Heineman.
No.
Jameson.
No.
Lemms.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Schafbauer.
Aye.
Soi.
No.
Overwig.
No.
Ottenbach.
No.
Six ayes, seven nays.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. So the 41st-day motion, having failed, we are back onto the original do-pass motion brought by Representative Jameson, seconded by Representative Heineman. Is there any further discussion on the do-pass motion? I don't see any, so I would ask the secretary to please call the roll on do-pass, SJR 502.
Representatives Spahn Mueller.
Aye.
Emery.
No.
Gosh.
No.
Hanson.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
Heineman.
Aye.
Jameson.
Aye.
Lemms.
Aye.
Reich.
No.
Schafbauer.
No.
Soi.
Aye.
Overwig.
Aye.
Ottenbach.
Aye.
Eight ayes, five nays.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. After receiving a majority vote of the members-elect, the do-pass motion on SJR 502 passes, and we'll go to the floor with a do-pass recommendation. Okay, moving on to our second item on the agenda for today, we have Senate Bill 12, Limit the-
Yay! We are here, ready to celebrate again, folks. You have been watching a debate, or I should say, you've been listening to a debate of the South Dakota Senate State Affairs Committee in consideration of our Article 5 Convention of States Application, SJR 502, and we got it. The vote was eight to five on a do-pass motion. Now, if you were listening to the whole thing, you heard there was another vote right before the final vote, and that vote was on a motion to carry to the 41st day, which is essentially a kill motion. So we were all on the edges of our seats. We heard from some of the opponents on that committee who are trying to convince the rest of the committee that they should be afraid of this process, that, you know, the Constitution's going to be burned up. But, you know, reason prevailed, logic prevailed, cooler heads prevailed in this committee today, and our Article 5 application received what it needed from this committee, which was a do-pass recommendation. That means that our Article 5 application in South Dakota will next go to the full South Dakota House for a floor vote. That could happen as early as tomorrow, so stay tuned for news on that. You know, we'll be bringing it all to you by live stream here. You heard from Senator Rick Santorum, who gave great testimony. You heard from Representative Heineman, our House-side sponsor who introduced the bill and then did a great job countering some of the fear and frankly, some ridiculous things that were said, both by those who testified as part of the public comment and from some committee members. Frankly, some of the most outrageous things were said by Representative Gosh, our longtime opponent there. But we are so excited and thankful that we did prevail in this committee by a vote of eight to five, which was even a stronger vote than we expected. And I see we have Mark Meckler and Deanna Beckett, who are there on the ground in South Dakota today. I am just thrilled. I couldn't be happier with this. How are you guys feeling? Oh, I don't think we have your audio.
There we go.
There we go.
Perfect.
Yep.
I think my butterflies have finally calmed down. I said to Mark earlier, I said, "Is it normally to be this nervous?" And he said, "There's a lot at stake here." And I'm like, "Yeah, there is, and this is my baby state." So I'm so excited. We got three of the four steps completed, and we are so excited.
Yeah, you know, Rita, it's pretty interesting, because we were looking at a seven-six vote. I mean, that was kind of our best count that we had hoped for, and that kind of a vote is always terrifying. Because one person flips and it's all over. You never know what happens from last night to this morning. I have to give huge kudos to the grassroots, of course, who've been working literally for 10 years, Shirley Meyer, who's been leading the way that whole time, Deanna, who lived here and led the way, and now it's her region. But I also got to give huge kudos to Rick Santorum. He comes out here, I'm with him, we're not usually together, I got the chance to be with him. I virtually have done nothing, to be honest with you. I'm hanging out here, Rick's doing all the hard work, and last night, he literally went over to a legislator's house, where some of the legislators were staying, and went and hung out with them, with our lobbyists, and had a conversation with one of the legislators, which led to a vote going our way that we weren't sure we were going to have. That was the number seven that we really needed. And so we had a long conversation with him late into the night, came back and met with me at the hotel, at the bar with our lobbyist, and we talked some more. Then Rick was on the floor early this morning with our lobbyist, working with legislators on the floor this morning before this hearing. So we got here to the building at probably right around 7:00 AM. It's cold here in South Dakota, in case you're wondering. And so we got in here, and Rick's working the floor, and it worked. I mean, it definitely paid off. So it's 10 years of incredible grassroots effort, but then it's also a hero like Rick Santorum coming in and kind of putting the finishing touches on it.
Wow, and Mark, I know you and I were texting a little bit last night after you got on the ground there, and we were both very nervous coming into this morning about this vote, because it was going to be close, and the seven to six, which we thought it was going to be, we weren't even confident of that. So I will tell you that I spent a lot of time praying over what was going to happen in this committee room, and just praying that the Lord would give these committee members confidence, courage, clear minds, and that they would vote according to reason and logic and not given to fear. Mark, do you have any comments about, you know, there were some pretty crazy things said in opposition. We always hear some crazy things said, but I wonder if you could comment specifically on Representative Gosh claimed that he hears from supporters who are saying they want to just go ahead and burn down the Constitution. I have never heard any of our supporters say that, and frankly, it's just hard for me to believe that. Do you want to respond to that at all?
Yeah, I don't believe anybody's ever said that, except for maybe Marxists on the left, and I thought it was outrageous, and it was a slur against convention of states activists. And, but, that representative's always been an aggressive opponent of ours. She's actually been called out personally by Mark Levin, frankly, for being such a jerk about this, and that was just offensive. And it was very hard for me, I was sitting in the front row, and I don't know if y'all remember years ago during Barack Obama's administration, a representative by the name of Joe Wilson stood up and shouted during the State of the Union address, "You lie." And that's what I felt like in that moment. I took everything I could to just contain myself and not shout at him for that offensive slur. You also had the National Committee woman, who clearly doesn't even understand the United States Constitution, saying that, you know, "Well, this is just for Congress to control." So what that means, when somebody says that, by the way, that Congress controls the second clause of Article 5, what they mean is, and what they're actually saying is, "Oh, the framers of the Constitution were idiots." That they drafted two clauses that operate exactly the same, they put the second one in there for no reason, to be redundant or something. And so that kind of stuff that you hear from these people, it's not only is it not true, but if you just think about it for five seconds, it's nonsensical. And so most of the opponent's testimony that we heard was simply just nonsense.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, hey, Mark, good job for restraining yourself and staying in your seat and not jumping up and yelling. I know it's hard, and I think for us, part of the reason it's so frustrating is because we hear many of the same, all of the same claims repeated over and over again, and they're so easily disproven, and yet people keep saying the same things. It can really be maddening. But hey, the truth prevailed today, logic prevailed, and South Dakota is one step closer to becoming state number 20 to save this republic, to restore federalism, and to do what the founders would be saying, "Why haven't you done this yet? We gave you this power, it's time for you to use it." So before we let you go, I know you have a lot of work to do, and I'm counting on you to go do it, Mark and Deanna. So tell our viewers what's next for you today.
Next up, of course, we're going to be meeting and getting as many legislators in this room that we're in to talk with Mark and Rick. Rick's got to get flying out of here in about an hour and a half, and we're just excited to be on the ground with our grassroots and continue that forward movement.
Yeah, and I want folks to know, this is not a given, if you're in South Dakota and you're watching this, contact your representative, because now we're going to go to a floor fight. And so we're three-quarters of the way through, right? The Senate's done, the House Committee's done, now we got to get it done on the floor of the House. What you heard from Representative Gosh there, you'll hear much more of that on the floor during the floor debate. You'll hear people say outrageous things against us. The hard part about watching a floor debate is, we don't get to say anything, right? So there's no testimony from the grassroots, there's no testimony from our experts. It's literally just legislator on legislator in that floor debate, and it's not a sure thing. So if you're in South Dakota, contact your legislator, your representative, right now. Email them, preferably pick up the phone and call them, and let them know that you support this resolution. And then if you're not here in South Dakota, what I need you to do is pray. Pray real hard for wisdom, for discernment, for the truth to prevail. If truth prevails, that people use their wisdom and their discernment in that legislature, I'm confident will pass.
Absolutely. Mark and Deanna, thank you for taking a few minutes to join us and talk to our viewers, and get out there. I'm praying for you. Go do what you need to do, and please congratulate the team for us. We're so proud of them. Congratulations.
Thanks.
Thanks, guys.
All right, well, that's going to conclude our live-stream coverage of the South Dakota House Committee hearing, where, again, we were victorious in a vote of eight to five. This committee passed a do-pass recommendation for our resolution in South Dakota. Next stop is the full South Dakota House, which could happen as early as tomorrow. Stay tuned for details. And by the way, subscribe to our coverage, share it, and catch all the action at conventionofstates.com/coslive. I'm Rita Peters, signing off for now. Have a great day.